There's a lot to comment on. So we'll get started and there will be a bell at the two and a half minute mark, which gives you a warning to try to wrap up your comments before the three minute time. So we'll get started with, and if you'll come forward when you hear your name and sit in the front row, we can move along with that a lot of the way. First, three people are, first is Bianca Encinas, Elizabeth Venceal, and Robert Nelson. The first three folks this week. So Bianca, you're leading on.
Good evening. Thank you for providing us this opportunity to speak. My name is Bianca Encinas. I live in Wells Park. I own property there. I am a member of the Historic Neighborhood Alliance. I'm also a member of the Wells Park Neighborhood Association. I'm a small business owner. I own Enchanted Casa Cultura. And I'm also an executive director for a project that was born out of Burnley County doing economic development, community development in its boulevard. I'm here today to request that the updated Burnley County Albuquerque Comprehensive Plan be deferred for 24 months. As outlined in the resolution for this project, that this process could take up to four years. And it was kicked off with the first two series of community meetings in 2015. So you can do the math. This public participation has failed to be inclusive of minorities and provide equal voice in the process of democracy as reflected in the city's own data. Therefore, failing to provide a rigorous public participation process to ensure meaningful input and maximize citizen and stakeholder engagement. The following areas of concern are reason for requesting for a 24-month deferral of the proposed comp plan. I will review this document, that is a city document, that interestingly was not included in the comp plan. A comprehensive plan for the city of Albuquerque and Burnley County is a community vision for community and economic development for the next few decades. It should reflect a process that ensured and produced equitable participation. Based on the city's own data, the participation of minorities in the development of the proposed comprehensive plan is well below their representation in terms of population. First thing you can look at are the countywide meetings. The meeting that was first held at Los Freygo's Health and Social Services Center, of the 39 attendees who were polled, close to 60% identified as white, non-Hispanic. 25% identified as Hispanic, Latino, or Chicano. And 0% identified as Native American. At the next countywide meeting, the second one, at the Highland Theater, 58 polled, 82% identified as white, non-Hispanic, 11% as Hispanic, Latino, Chicano, plus or minus 3% Native American. This is very concerning considering that the Highland Theater is within range of the International District, which is one of the most diverse in terms of population in the state of New Mexico. These numbers obviously do not reflect that diversity. This is also concerning because 48%, close to half of the population in Burnley County is Hispanic, 80% in the South Valley is Hispanic, and 80% in the West Central area is Hispanic. Millennials, meeting held for millennials at Tractor Brewery, 39 polled, 74% white, non-Hispanic, 15% Hispanic, Latino, Chicano, 0% Native American. According to the National Real Estate Investor, currently minorities, specifically Hispanics, make up almost half of all millennials in the United States. This is also reflected in Burnley County, where most millennials live in the southwest area of Burnley County, and Hispanics make up the largest percentage of millennial population. And to end off, in addition, and according to APS, and is this cited within the comp plan, 2/3 of APS's population identifies as Hispanic, Latino, and Chicano. Obviously, this process has been inadvisable.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess Mr. Webb or whoever wants to answer this, I have a question. None of you may. I don't have a question. Thank you. Were these meetings, obviously these meetings were intentionally held in different areas of the city, as already noted, the Highland Theater and different places. Were these set out to specific groups of people? Or was this public announcements so that anyone could attend, no matter, anyone could attend? Is that, that's my understanding. Is that correct?
Mr. President, Counselor Jones, that is correct. It was a public meeting.
So did we specifically target, obviously some meetings we specifically targeted white English. How did we do this?
Absolutely. So President Counselor Jones, outreach was done particularly for those countywide meetings in both English and Spanish. The survey that was done at those countywide meetings that she mentioned provided the polling data, they were, those same questions were mirrored on an online poll that was available by mobile phone and other kind of digital devices. It was online for several months in both English and Spanish. We also provided Spanish language translation services at both of those meetings. And staff from the planning department met with several organizations that do, that provide services for Spanish-speaking populations in an effort to let them know that the project was happening to help us get tapped into communities that don't speak English, non-white communities here within Albuquerque. And I will just say that in general, public processes dealing with the comprehensive plan and other kind of policy-related things, it's very challenging to help people understand on a day-to-day basis how it affects them and to take time away from their busy lives and busy schedules to come to a public meeting to talk about land use. So we certainly wanted to have a representation of our community. We certainly cast the net wide. These were the participants that came.
Thank you, Mr. President. One more. And so I could assume that because we did accept suggestions and questions and everything online, that this was available to everyone? Okay. Thank you. So there was no concerted effort to not encompass the entire city and county? Thank you.
Counselor Gibson.
Thank you. So thanks for that. It was a really good explanation of how we got input, once people got there. But again, and I think you touched on it a little bit, and I think you were talking about, something was advertising for these meetings was done in the newspaper, radio, and TV, I think I remember hearing. So, you know, nobody wants to be excluded. Nobody, I certainly don't want anybody excluded from this. But, you know, would make me feel better if I knew that, you know, it was an honest attempt to, you know, to reach out to everybody, no matter who they were or where they lived. So looking back on now, are there, is there anything you think that we could have done differently in order to bring in other people?
Mr. President, Counselor Gibson, as Andrew had in his presentation, there are newspaper advertisements, radio advertisements, advertisements online, Pandora Radio, Facebook. We did what we could. We even asked the council for more money for an advertising budget, and you gave it to us and we used it. It's almost gone. We're still using it to advertise public hearings here at the city council. We're advertising the planning commission hearing for the IDO. We're saving some for when the IDO gets to you. I think one of the most important ways to get the word out is through our neighborhood associations. We have a very strong neighborhood association program here with the city of Albuquerque. And we make sure to put in regular notices in the neighborhood news to make sure that those representatives of the neighborhood associations got that information, could pass it along to their membership so they knew that there was an upcoming event, an upcoming meeting, an upcoming hearing. But like every other type of advertising and outreach, you can put it out there, you can't make people come to the meetings. But so we had other venues and other ways to get information in, emails, meetings with staff. But those meetings and those comments we get in, we weren't tracking ethnicity or language or geographical location. We were just taking comments.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, and I understand, or at least I think, as I remember, that there was a plan to also do advertising on Spanish-speaking radio stations, Spanish radio stations. Did that happen?
Mr. President, Counselor Jones, yes. We had ads on the radio with English and Spanish. And, you know, some of the statistics that were cited about the amount of people who identify as Hispanic, Latino, or Chicano here, from my experience, being Chicano myself, most of us don't speak Spanish. Some of us do, some of us don't, but most of us don't.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you.
All right. Continue with the public comment. Elizabeth Venceal, followed by Robert Nelson, followed by Loleta Narango Lopez. Please come on down and hear your发言.
I am very frustrated. I am more frustrated now than before after hearing some of this. This is the map, and I think that some of the counselors are relying heavily on the city employees who are relying heavily on trying to make their boss happy. And these meetings have been absolutely ridiculous. I found out about a meeting because I got an email as a follow-up from going to an art meeting. I got an email that says, "How would you like to make Albuquerque good to great?" What the heck does that mean? And no one at the meeting said, "Hi, we're going to take away all your power as a sector plan. We're going to rename your neighborhood." I don't even have a neighborhood name anymore. Now on this map, it's called the Near Heights and the Mid Heights. I don't even know what area I'm in. This is absolutely ridiculous. Those meetings were conducted by someone who was a mediator, who said, "Tell me how you feel. Here's a piece of paper. Get up and write something on the piece of paper that's relevant to what's going on." And nobody even knew what he was talking about. So you know what I did? I got a piece of paper and I wrote, "Stop art," and I hung it up. And by the way, the art project is not over. I stuck that on the wall. That's how the meetings were run. There was never any honesty about this. There was never anything about, "We're taking away everything that means anything and giving you ambiguous language." President, I don't know how to say these words, I'm sorry. President and Counselor Sanchez, you ask, "What about vision?" If you look on page 1019, it's talking about open space. And it says, "Acquire significant lands to shape the urban form, conserve natural and cultural resources, and protect agricultural land." What does that mean? What does that mean? What does that mean about the current land? Go back two sections to where it talks about the volcanoes. Well, it doesn't say anything. It does not say anything to guide anybody. It says in here at page 413, "All residents should have the opportunity to engage in civic affairs." But at page 414, it says, "That leads to confusion and unrealistic expectations." Mr. Andrew Webb said, "Staff planning we've learned is more efficient than community-level planning." Yeah. This whole thing has been planned by somebody else at a meeting that none of us went to, and it's being offered as a solution to a problem that none of us, that we have. You know, this is absolutely really, really frustrating. Pat Davis introduced me to the engineer, had Michael Greben have the engineer come talk to me about my neighborhood and about my sidewalk and my concerns about the area. So Ed Potts came out and said, "You know why you can't find our plans online? Because I've not done one."
Time's up, Elizabeth. Counselor Davis has a comment or question.
Do me?
To Mr. Webb, actually, I just wanted to follow up. Elizabeth, thank you for, I know you're going to be able to talk about this at some length and very neighbor issues. Mr. President, if you could just clarify, Ms. Venceal mentioned that on the page you showed, 416, that neighborhoods had gone away. But I want to clarify, I think the map that we were referencing is what we call community planning areas that have been in place since 1985, right? They're broader, sort of overlapping for right 270. Can you just clarify that for folks watching in on, we might not have a big bit of this big book in front of the table?
Yes, Mr. President, Counselor Davis, what you're referring to are the, what we're now referring to is the community planning areas, and they are an update of some earlier maps for general community planning areas found in the current comp plan. And they're based on census tracts and would typically comprise several, may comprise several neighborhoods at a time, but allow for some small-scale study to be possible but within census tracts from which data can be, meaningful data can be brought in and that sort of thing. The comp plan, nor the, not of the comp plan, nor the IDO would change any neighborhood association boundary or change its name or do anything like that. If I could, Counselors, I also mentioned that it sounds like the commenter may have conflated meaning with, regarding the Albuquerque Rapid Transit Project with one of these meetings. I don't recall the meetings going quite that way.
All right. Next speaker is Robert Nelson, followed by Ms. Narango Lopez, followed by Gregory Dugay.
Good evening, Mr. President and Counselors. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. We really appreciate the chance to express our comments and even just our questions. My name is Robert Nelson. I sit on the board for the Wells Park Neighborhood Association. I'm also a member of the Historic Neighborhood Alliance. I have more things prepared to say, but after that presentation, I feel a little bit more dismayed. But with that, I will say that as a member of the Historic Neighborhood Alliance, I request the updated, I and the updated, updated out of the county comprehensive plan be deferred for 24 months. The historic neighborhoods for HNA is reason for reporting that the referral of the comp follows. Community resident vision and priorities input is essential for guiding the comp plan document. The community residential leader's vision and priorities were not meaningfully integrated into the comp plan at all. Development community has stated on record of their approval of this plan, which has been led from the beginning by the former attorney who is currently serving as the Director of the City of Albuquerque's Department. And as Ms. Bianca Encinas left, and I will refer to that survey, which was done in August 2013 by the town department, a majority of the participants in the meetings were white Anglo, and a very small majority were of Hispanic or people of color. And so even though the document itself says that it has value principle of equity and strong neighborhoods, I live in Wells Park. Wells Park is 70% Hispanic. And unfortunately, I don't believe that this document is equitable and the processes have not been acceptable. And I would recommend, at least in any way, that a framework of ratio equity be taken into account when creating or formulating this document as we move forward. I think people have done a lot of work around our community, and I appreciate that quite a bit. I definitely think that there needs to be more work done to address this gap in our community. And that's it. Thank you for your time.
I have a question, Mr. Nelson.
Sure.
So you're on the board of the Wells Park Neighborhood, as you said?
Yes.
And was the request for a two-year deferral, is that, was that something a neighbor voted upon and supports?
No, unfortunately, I'm speaking in the front of the Historic Neighborhood Alliance.
Okay. So you're speaking to the individual members?
Yes.
Just wanted to be clear. All right. So next is Loleta Narango Lopez, followed by Gregory Dugay, and then Richard Moore.
Buenas noches, residentes y consejeros. Mi nombre es Loleta Narango Lopez, y soy mexicana. Y estoy representando Martinez Town Workgroup, Albuquerque Historic, and the Historic Neighborhood Alliance. Y la comunidad que vivo estoy viviendo habla español. The comp plan is a community vision financed by the community. However, there has not been community participatory methods to make sure the plan is a true community vision. According to the land use section, it is important to protect public health and safety by separating residential and industrial through buffering, as if this language will take care of the noise and air pollution Martinez Town deals with every day. Martinez Town Santa Barbara is an historic neighborhood, and there should not be any designation of area change in this neighborhood. The zoning in Martinez Town Santa Barbara neighborhood was established in error, so the general plan policy for land use is detrimental in preserving historicness Martinez Town Santa Barbara and residential R1 land use. More specifically, mixed-use zoning has been unhealthy for the neighborhood. The update, the update plan only continues to be detrimental to the historic residential neighborhood. And then in the, in the past, the neighborhood had, I could count how many commercial businesses, five, which were grocery stores that served the needs of the residents. The types of uses today in the neighborhood are incompatible with the neighborhood and are detrimental to the health, safety, and welfare for the family and children. Martinez Town Workgroup requested the council keep the sector plans and protect the Martinez Town Santa Barbara residential zone, residential land use with R1 zoning with limited density, protected with limited density, new uses, and negative impacts from nearby developments. And that if there's any new uses or development or redevelopment, they will need, need to be compatible in scale and in character and the surrounding area. I want to thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak, and we are asking for 24 months to review this plan and to make it a plan that is our vision. And if anybody doesn't understand community participatory methods, it would be like the business committee, sitting at the table and putting their language, what they have currently in this comp plan. That would be that we were in, in the discussions that began when there was just a thought about updating the plan.
Question, Mr. Webb. This is a Martinez Town area designated as an area of change, a neighborhood boundary.
Mr. President, Counselors, the, excuse me, areas of Martinez Town that are single-family and that are used for single-family residential purposes are in areas of consistency. So, so any redevelopment in those areas would have to match the scale and intensity and character of the surrounding neighborhood. Some of the, the existing commercially zoned properties along the corridor, such as Broadway and Lomas, are designated as areas of change.
And that goes in typically just one property in from the corridor?
Mr. President, Counselors, yes.
Okay. And we've been talking, now, this, the area change is, that designation is in the comp plan. The regulatory question of the actual individual land zoning is not correct?
Mr. President, Counselors, that is correct. So the, one of the key purposes of the, of the areas of change and areas of consistency framework is, for instance, is for zone change consideration. So if somebody requests a zone change in an area of consistency, if that is an area of, that is primarily housing, the policies in the comprehensive plan call for, you know, no more intensive uses to be imposed in residential neighborhoods.
And we talked about this at love somewhat, but the, with that language then, in the comp plan, support downzoning in places like Martinez Town where we have a patchwork and, and the city spearheading that kind of downzoning?
Mr. President, Counselors, I would have to maybe think about that a little bit more, but generally I would say, yes, that policy--
I mean, the preponderance, the preponderance of that unfortunate patchwork of zoning that was created in the bad old days of zoning is something we're living with, but the preponderance of the properties and the uses is still residential.
That is, that's absolutely correct. And the, the areas of change and areas of consistency maps were based on several things, but one of them was actual land uses. So the project team looked at not necessarily what the, and, and, you know, Narango Lopez is correct that there is a lot of mixed-use zoning in the Martinez Town area. It's been there for many years. But in, in areas that do have mixed-use zoning, but which are residential, those who fall into the, into the areas of consistency in terms of the policies guiding development and guiding zone changes.
And under this document, as policy, we would not have created that kind of patchwork that we're having to struggle with today.
Mr. President, Counselors, I would say that's correct, yes.
Thank you. Let's continue then. Gregory Dugay, followed by Richard Moore, and then Nick.
Mr. Dugay left.
Mr. Dugay left. Mr. Moore, welcome. And then after Nick will be Renee Horga.
You know, I was, I was asked before I came to the meeting this evening to, not to strike up my blood pressure. You know, I think I've done a pretty good job at that, but you all have struck up my blood pressure, okay? Because I say that, Mr. Chair, your council members, I don't know whether sometimes we're going backwards or we're going forwards. So I'm going to deal with a few comments. They are not personal comments. They are very political comments, and I want you to understand that. My name is Richard Moore. I'm the co-foregator of Los Arenas Institute. We're also a property owner, organization, owns property in the downtown, in the downtown area. And so I just want to say this to get these off of my chest fairly quickly, to lower my blood pressure, you know? First of all, you may have heard the saying before, "We're tired of being tired." So I'm going to lead you with that comment, because I'm tired of being tired of coming to these meetings, these city council meetings, and be what I perceive as disrespectful from council members. So what do I mean by that very quickly? It said, "Some are going to come in here and testify that they haven't had enough time for, for input. They haven't had enough time for, for, for community meetings. They haven't had..." That's not the way that you start off a constructive discussion about a very important issue like the comprehensive plan. The other thing that I will say, I've attended meetings. I've attended meetings in Counselor Pennsill's area. When you want to know how to get community people out for meetings, why don't you ask a community person about how to get community people out to community meetings? Because for many of us, we have been working, supporting on issues in these communities that you're discussing right now for 50, 75 to 100 years. I need you to put that on the table so you understand something. When this staff comes in here and talks about the sector development plan isn't this, and the sector development plan isn't that, do you understand the struggle for years upon years upon years that our people and our communities have been even being here in these meetings for? I was attending city council meetings before there was a mayorial structure in this city, okay? So I have been to hundreds upon hundreds upon hundreds of these meetings. And so when this staff comes in here and has disrespect for the history and dedication that our community leaders have made for many years and says, "Sector development plan..." We had to struggle to get a sector development plan. That didn't come easy. We had to struggle to get community input. That didn't come easy. So when you're discussing these issues around the comprehensive plan, you've heard some of the recommendations that have been made. We're not complainers. We're about coming here with solutions and recommendations. When you want to listen to them and you want to hear them, and then we will continue, and I'm speaking for Los Arenas Institute to make that very clear, we'll continue to do that. So I just want to say to you that you are about, again, making some very important decisions that are going to impact the life, the livelihood, the safety of our community. So you think about that when you're going through this process. So you validated some community processing, you validated some community structuring, and so on that. So why don't you get back and re-engage the community in what the community should have engaged in the first place? My last comment, Mr. Chair, with all respect, I will say this, that all this data flags that the city planner and consultants implemented a public outreach plan that was totally ineffective and culturally insignificant. And my last comment to this gentleman, I don't know if he was speaking for the Chicano community, but there's a very large Spanish-speaking community that exists, residents in that community. So whether you're speaking for yourself or whether you're speaking to someone else, matter of fact, there's a very large community that's been left out of there. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Counselors, and we'll see you at the next city council meeting to explain the rest of the issues that we're concerned about.
Thank you. Next speaker is Nick, followed by Renee Horga, and then Pat Callahan.
President, councilors, greetings. My name is Nick, and I am the current president of the Santa Barbara-Martinistown Neighborhood Association. Let me start by saying that many of your questions addressed our concerns, the questions that you have asked for have addressed our concerns and seem to be dealt with in the comp plan. As of our last mailing, we reached 680 of our constituents and about 20 small businesses in the Santa Barbara-Martinistown neighborhood. We keep our constituents regularly up to date via our website, next door, snail mailings, emails, texts, and phone calls. Our neighborhood is extremely concerned with preserving its very rich and deeply rooted history. We are also concerned about our existing land use versus zone codes and how to maintain our neighborhood as family and small to medium business friendly. We also want to maintain diversity of design and architecture of our buildings and keep them low so that we can all equally enjoy our sun, our rain, our wind, and especially protect and enjoy our incredible views. With these great concerns in mind, we have worked in partnership with the city's planning department, and I want to thank them for their dedication to our neighborhood and their profession, as well as a few other professionals, to develop an architectural design guidelines for our neighborhood specifically. We are now seeking and will integrate feedback from various groups and as many residents as possible. Once approved, these guidelines for residential buildings would be helpful when remodeling, but especially for new construction. Our next effort will be to develop similar guidelines for our businesses and future commercial buildings. The Neighborhood Association supports the proposed comprehensive plan as long as we can continue to work with the city's planning department in developing the short-term and long-term goals and policies that will not only preserve and protect our neighborhood, but also carry it into the future. And once again, I would like to volunteer our neighborhood to be the first for the community planning assessment project. Thank you for your attention. I am glad to address any questions or concerns you may have.
Thank you. Next is Renee Horvath, followed by Pat, let me see, did read that right, Gallagher.
Hello, my name is Renee Horvath. I'm with the Taylor Ranch Neighborhood Association, and we've been involved with this because we have received notices, but I do agree, a lot of people in Albuquerque, if you're not involved in a neighborhood association, really will not know what's going on. And so, I find with our current comp plan, it says blend with the built and natural environment. And when you do that, you know, it complements the area. And a good plan pays attention to area constraints and preserves community assets. But we're trying to homogenize the rules, and we will not get customized rules for your specific area. Sector plans were developed for areas like, for start districts, for areas that have natural features or want to preserve use, like along the Coors Corridor Plan. I think we are moving way too fast because you want to eliminate these sector plans. This is really the only thing that's protecting us. And for instance, like the Coors Plan, some of your best shopping centers and best development is because of that plan. And Coors is in the area of change, but all our commercial areas in the city is in the areas of change. And we are changing up the rules of the game for all the areas of change. So, this will affect everybody. And I cannot guarantee that we will have nice development after this, because the development that doesn't follow the Coors Plan is the ugliest development that we got on Coors. So, that's why I'm really worried about losing our sector plans. And I think we're moving too fast because we're changing a lot. And you're, you just introduced the IDO, all the regulations last week, we're having a study session tomorrow with EPC. They're going to start hearings February 2nd, and they're trying to get this approved in a month. And I, when, last time I looked at that IDO, I was so confused. I, I just, I don't know where to begin. I, and, and we've had the holidays, and now we're trying to get this thing approved. I, I'm really worried that, you know, if we don't slow down and really do this right and really be sure that we want to eliminate the sector plans, I, at this point, I'd say do not eliminate the sector plans, but I don't think we have the protections needed. The sector plans tell a story, they put the policies and the regulations together, they tell a story for us. And when you separate them, there's no meaning. The IDO rules are very sterile with them. There's no meaning to it anymore. And so, I, that's why I'm pretty worried about what's happening here. And, and we're promoting a lot of density, and people get really worried about density. We have to do density very good, and it has to be in scale and attractive architecture, otherwise you're going to have very upset people. And, and, I mean, I've seen some good density, but I've seen some really bad density. And if we don't do this right, you're going to have a lot of upset people, not just us along Coors, you're going to have them all around the city, so.
Thank you, Ms. Horvath. Time's up, so let me ask you a question. So, do you object to the, specifically to the designations of areas of change versus areas of consistency?
Well, okay, I, I can understand, you know, the areas of change you want to direct, you know, like if you're going to redevelop a commercial area. Okay, I, okay, I can kind of see where you're coming from, but they do batch up to residents. What I'm worried about, because this plan promotes a lot of density and a lot of change, and a lot of terms are changed, I don't understand half the terms, but you've got to do it well, because people, they, they get, if things are out of scale for their area, they get really upset. So, you've got to, you know, mixed-use idea is a good idea. I've seen a few good mixed-use idea, you know, developments, but there's, there are very few. And then I've seen really some high-density stuff that's very plain Jane, they're almost, you know, could become a slum. So, if we don't do this right, you know, we'll just have a lot of-
You know, my question's focused on the, on this as opposed to the IDO, right? And I hear the concerns about the IDO.
Yeah, because it's coming up really fast, and we're trying to deal with this, and-
From what I can see in this, you know, new language that's in this is stronger with regard to protection and, and preservation of historic neighborhoods especially. I mean, in mixed-use, obviously, it's a bad thing in a place like Santa Barbara-Martinistown. It may be a good thing in other places, so, and, and, you know, density is, you know, gosh, over the years, I remember 20 years ago now, they were doing citywide discussions about what does that mean, you know? Because there's all sorts of density, there's, you know, any increase of, and a house on an empty lot is an increase of density. But then, you know, there's the things that you're concerned about where it has to do with the form, and it's blocking the view, or it's poorly designed, and it's ugly, and I understand.
Yeah. But since we're changing so much, and we're having a hard time understanding, I feel we're going to be less protected unless we really, you know, we're getting care of it. And I, and I feel like we're rushing it. And I, I don't feel secure in what we have so far. I think I just need some time.
All right, Pat Gallagher, and was, did, Mr. President, is that number person, sir?
Before we go into the next speaker, I thought that this Horvath raised a very good point regarding the establishment of the Coors Corridor Plan. Before that was established, my question would be to Andrew, the development in that area, and the, the development that was done in the area was not as strong as it was after the Coors Corridor Plan was developed. Now, with this plan in place, replacing the Coors Corridor Plan, is development going to be as strong, are we going to revert back to some of the development we had seen through the Coors Corridor Plan, or is it developed?
Mr. President, Councilman Sanchez, the comprehensive plan that we're considering to, that we're talking about tonight would not affect the regulations of the Coors Corridor Plan. However, I would say that the, the regulatory components of the Coors Corridor Plan, the new preservation, that sort of thing, setbacks, have been brought into the draft integrated development ordinance, and our, the regulatory components of the Coors Corridor Plan would continue to stand in the IDO as per proposed.
Well, I, I looked at overlay zones, they separated the narratives from the regulations. I think they should, they should have more narratives with those regulations, otherwise they're just sterile. And, and it just helps people to understand the vision of what we're trying to do next to it. It just has regulations, and, and, and the regulations, they're not, they're not quoted exactly how a Coors is, and we need, I'm not, I, I just don't think that we have it right yet. And we're starting this approval process, and I don't, I think we have it right yet. I don't feel secure that we do. So, that's why everybody's a little worried.
Thank you. Mr. Gallagher. And then, is it Elizabeth Moore?
Mr. President, councilors, my name is Pat Gallagher, I'm the president of the Landowners' Association. I live on the west side, on doors, and I've been to most of the meetings that have been about this plan, and I'd say at this point, it's being rushed without adequate time for scrutiny. About informing the public, I read the newspaper every day, a lot, a lot of the newspaper, and I know a lot about the art because of the newspaper. And there's, I tried to go find articles in the Albuquerque Journal about the, about this ADCZ plan, and there aren't. There was one or two, one was about parking in front yards, but it was nothing compared to the kind of attention that needs to be given to something that is this big. And there's, in two years, there hasn't been one front-page article, one business article about what this thing's really doing. And I think if the people knew, the voters knew, they would be speaking up, they would be there to talk about it, and they would go to these meetings if they only knew about it. We, in the neighborhoods, we get to hear about it. I'm very glad that they have 10,000 people on the list, sir, that we get to get information about when the meetings are, but it's really not going to be taken seriously until there is some publicity and some information put out there about what's going on here. There, besides that, there are some serious problems with this project. It's based on a transportation scheme, this box that you saw, where Coors is planned to be a premium transit corridor, and it doesn't have what it has to have in order to be a premium transit corridor. It doesn't have the density, and it doesn't have the collateral circulation that you have to have if you're going to put major transit system up Coors. And the river's in the way, there's no bridges, so we're going to end up with a, another situation sort of like ours, where we're going to have to densify Coors in order to make it big enough to get the federal funding to, to make it into a transit corridor. And so, there's a real chance that we're going to densify Coors and just end up with a bigger problem than we had before. And maybe perhaps there's no federal funding to go with it. So, there's a real chance that we could end up with a real failed corridor just as a result of this comp plan, saying that this has got to be a premium transit corridor. It will, it is very important that it's going to be shifting power away from the people and away from the EPC, and it's going to make it more difficult for people to get involved with this, with this whole process.
Thank you, Ms. Gallagher. Next is from Mr. Moore.
Thank you for saying so late. The resolution that gave birth to the revision of the comprehensive plan, the overhaul of the zoning code, called for a three-to-four-year process to begin October 2014. Everyone will know the date is January 2017, just a little over two years. And Clarion and Associates, the lead contractor, appears to have imposed a cookie-cutter two-year schedule regardless of community concerns. And this was published earlier on in the process. It's like, this is my schedule, and we're going to keep it come heck or high water, excuse my language. And the Clarion representative at a public meeting indicated that a fast process is desired so that the crackpots and wackos don't get a hold of it, that is, the neighborhoods don't get a chance to review it. Santa Fe, a city of a little over one-seventh the size of Albuquerque, redid its zoning code and took four and a half years to do it. There's simply no credible reason to barrel down this approval track. More time is needed for community review, community input, meaningful dialogue amongst the councilors and the community to really work out these issues and understand the issues that neighborhoods have. Please do not approve this plan as presented on this fast track. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, is there response then at this point from council staff and planning staff? Any questions that were raised from public comment? Councilors have any questions besides what's been asked? Councilor.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I understand the concerns of, while it's going to be other people, people who aren't retired and don't have their own businesses and don't have regular jobs, sometimes those folks do not demographically match the people who are available to go meetings in certain places at certain times of day. But I'm wondering if staff detected, was there, assuming the underrepresented who talked to the, was there a difference among these folks than the people who did talk to them? In other words, was there, was there a demographic difference in who they spoke to that you could detect, and to maybe look into that? What I mean is that, I'm sure we did speak to a lot of, people, Spanx people and so forth, just not proportionally, maybe you shouldn't have, but that those folks have a different point of view. Maybe that's, and answer that now, maybe next year.
President Ben, Councilor Harris, that's a difficult question. From my memory, the conversations throughout these work sessions, and I'll just point out to the focus groups, I think for us, were the most productive format that we used to engage the public. So, we had three different series of focus groups, one in July of 2015, one in November, December of 2015, and then another one in April and May when the draft had kind of come together. And so, we, in order to try and focus people's attention, because this, this plan covers so much ground, we provided one and a half hour kind of working sessions where we took a particular topic and talked, we tried really hard to do targeted outreach to groups that we knew were working on that issue. For example, the open space advisory committee was, was key to helping us reach out when we talked about open space, for example. For the, for the topics that we've heard about tonight, I think the focus groups that we did on community identity, on housing, particularly discussions about gentrification, about displacement in the International District, in Martinistown, and we also had a focus group on homelessness in particular, where we talked to service providers as well as the public. So, I, I'm not really answering your demographic question. I, I think we were trying to really reach the people who are passionate in the community and engaged in the community around topics rather than around- and engaged in the community around topics rather than around ethnicity. So we were really trying to reach the people who are engaged and the neighborhoods who've been involved, as well as the general public through the publicity, and try to say what's working, what's not working, what does our comprehensive plan say now about these things, and how can we improve it? So, Councilor Benton, when you talked about those guiding principles, those weren't planning department coming up with those. Those guiding principles were really a result of the people who came to those focus groups and other engagement throughout the process, saying equity is important. So I don't think that those guiding principles would have been the same with a different set of people who came. I think they do represent kind of our deepest values as a community, and I, as a community planner, I am saddened by the lack of diversity in our outreach results, but we certainly were attempting to let everybody participate as we could.
Mr. Greed, uh?
Mr. President, Councilor Harris, I'd also give my observation that one of the newest chapters, the cultural landscapes chapter in the comprehensive plan, was really informed by some of our meetings we had in the South Valley, where, whether it was cultural or just the geography of the location, that's really where we heard a lot of emphasis and importance on preserving the agricultural distinctness of the South Valley and other rural areas within the city and county area. And because those areas have been historically linked to long-term inhabitants who've been here for hundreds of years, I think that was one of the most striking differences, or at least unique aspects, that we've got through this process. But like Michaela said, I think those guiding principles kind of cut across all categories, and we found agreement with those six guiding principles.
Councilor Harris, other question, Councilor Sanchez?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. My question to staff is, this dates the Albuquerque-Burnleyo County Comprehensive Plan. Has the Burnleyo County Commission or residents of the county had an opportunity to approve this plan?
President Benton, Councilor Sanchez, yes. The, as Bianca and Sinus mentioned, the two visioning sessions that started the visioning process were county-wide. We had our counterparts at the county helping us with outreach efforts, including their Office of Neighborhood Coordination equivalent, went out to their neighborhood associations and tried to get people to come to those visioning sessions. The county also held its own meetings for just county residents to supplement what we were doing for the ABC to Z process. So yes, the county has certainly been involved. I would say that the participation from county residents has been less intense certainly than the city's residents, and the county intends, once the council takes the final vote on this update, to do a little bit more outreach before they send the comprehensive plan through the county's version of the approval process.
So you don't believe this should have been on a peat rule track with the county and the city? Because it sounds like you're going to reach out after we vote on this and go to the county when the county probably should have been engaged in the last two years with this process, because it is the Albuquerque-Burnleyo County Comprehensive Plan.
President Benton, Councilor Sanchez, I didn't mean to say that they weren't involved the whole way, they were, and the outreach was certainly done in tandem for both the city and the county. There were county residents at many of the meetings, so there was cross-pollination of ideas. The land use chapter for the county that is exclusively about the county development areas did not propose substantive changes to its own policies, and so that section is not the subject of much change. I believe because they didn't see the rigorous involvement that our residents provided for many of our neighborhood associations, they wanted to do additional outreach after we go forward with that.
And also regarding, one of these speakers, I think Bianca did bring up a very good point regarding framework of racial equity. That's an important issue, that we need to get more people of color, Hispanics, African-Americans, Native Americans, involved in this process. I think Richard Moore, who's got an organization, I'm not sure if you guys reached out to his agency or organization to try to get more people engaged and involved. But again, we have a population of 145,000 people here in Albuquerque. When you've got a meeting, I'm not sure what the number was, Bianca, about, I think 77 Hyton High School, that would affect the population of our community. And I think that we need to make sure that we do reach out to every ethnicity, to make sure that we try to get as many people as we can in these meetings.
Other questions or comments from councilors? Seeing none. On O-27, I'll move a deferral till January 18th. Motion second for deferral, O-27. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? That passes. And then on R-108, I hear they do pass.
Second.
And that's the, and then we do have a floor amendment on that, so I'll move floor amendment number one, which is going to write that to R-108.
Second.
Motion in a second. You want to describe that amendment briefly?
Absolutely, Mr. President, councilors, that amendment would adopt the updated exhibit, which is the council green line, and I mean, reference to incorporate changes that were made or recommended by the project team following the LUX process. And it has been detailed to you in a separate matrix that's also been provided to you, a spreadsheet basically, and is also shown in that exhibit as a green text.
So there's a motion, a second for amendment. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? That passes. And I'll move a deferral to January 18th.
Second.
The motion is second for deferral, R-108, as amended until January 18th. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? That passes. Takes to R-109. That's a gentleman.
You're doing fine. President.
I'll move a deferral until January 18th.
Second.
There's a motion, a second, till January 18th on R-109. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? That passes. And, took a lot of things here.